Good morning. I now, I now call this a public hearing of the Standing Committee on Social Development, Development to Order. My name is Jane Wayalan Armstrong, MLA for Mofe, Clutcheon Region, and Chair of the Standing Committee. At this time, I will ask committed members in the room and online to introduce themselves. We'll start to my left.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Minister and colleagues. My name is Dan McNeely, representing the Emily for the Sautier Region.
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Yakla. I'm a member for the Detche. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Shawna Morgan, MLA for Yellinif North, here in Yellinif.
We'll go to Mr. Hawkins, online.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Good evening, or goodie, everyone. My name is Robert Hawkins. I'm the MLA for Yellinif Centre. I apologize, I cannot attend in person. I'm on a family matter out of town, but I know I'll be calling word for word like our millions of subscribers. Happy to be here. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Bill 23, an Act to Amend the Children's Law Act, and Bill 24, an Act to Amend the Family Law Act, each received second reading in the Legislative Assembly on March 13th, 2025. Bill 23 proposes changes to the current Children's Law Act, and Bill 24 proposed changes to the current Family Law Act following amendments to the Federal Divorce Act that came into force in 2021. This committee has been tasked with reviewing these bills to see if they are ready to continue on a path to becoming laws. That is our role in this process. We did not write the bills, but we are responsible for taking a very close look at it and making sure these bills represent the wants and needs of the NWT residents as best we can. This morning, committee will hear from the Honorable Jay McDonald, Minister of Justice. After that, we will open the floor to any members of the public here today who wish to share their view, to share their, their feedback on Bill 23 and Bill 24 with committee. I would like to invite the Honorable Jay McDonald, Minister of Justice, to witness, to the witness table. When you, when you are ready, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, committee, for the opportunity to be here today. With me today, I have Ian Rennie, Director of Legislative, Legislation Division, Department of Justice; Emily Ingerfield, Manager of Policy and Planning, Department of Justice; Dr. Joseph Labine, Ministerial Special Advisor for my office. I'm here today to speak with you about Bill 23, an Act to amend the Children's Law Act, and Bill 24, an Act to amend the Family Law Act. Bills 23 and 24 propose changes to the Northwest Territories Children's Law Act and Family Law Act that will bring them in line with changes to the Federal Divorce Act that came into force in 2021 via Bill C78. Family law in Canada is an area of shared responsibility between the federal, provincial, and territorial governments. Family breakdown is a difficult experience for everyone involved, especially for children. These bills are bringing cases of common law and other non-marriage family breakdown involving children under a similar legislative regime to that of divorcing parents of children subject to federal law. Bill 23 will update the best interests of the child, test the related provisions with increased guidance to judges, and it will clarify a child is to spend as much time with each parent as is consistent with the child's best interests. New terminology used in the Divorce Act will be introduced emphasizing partnering, replacing custody, and access with terms like parenting time, decision-making responsibility, and contact, custody and access. Orders will be replaced with parenting and con, and contact orders. New provisions to address family violence include adopting the Divorce Act definitions that captures some non-criminal behavior like coercive and controlling behavior and ensuring judges consider specific factors like ongoing court actions related to the safety, security, and well-being of the child. Relocation is currently not addressed in the Children's Law Act. The Divorce Act's relocation framework included in the amendments will define relocation and require the impacts on relationships between the child and special people in the child's life be considered. Mandatory notice of relocation to another parent will be required, and objections to relocation must be settled through the court. Some ancillary changes unrelated to the Divorce Act will govern collection and the use of information related to the operation of the Child Support Recalibration Services and allow greater flexibility for the judiciary to create rules of the court. This concludes my opening remarks, and I will now pass it over to Emily to provide presentation and walk through the bill in more detail, if it pleases, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
All right. Good morning, and thank you for inviting this presentation on Bills 23 and 24, which amend the Children's Law Act and Family Law Act. Family law in Canada is an area of shared jurisdiction between the federal, provincial, and territorial governments. The Federal Divorce Act applies to married couples who are divorcing and related matters such as arrangements for children, including parenting time, decision-making responsibility, contact, and child and spousal support. Provincial or territorial legislation applies to those same matters for separating unmarried or common-law couples or married couples who are separating but not divorcing. This presentation covers two separate bills. The first bill, 23, which will amend the Children's Law Act, a foundational piece of family law legislation in the NWT. This act applies to custody and access, which are the current terms used in the legislation, and support matters for the children of separating unmarried or common-law couples and addresses parentage and guardianship. Bill 24 will amend the Family Law Act, another foundational piece of family law legislation for the NWT. This act sets out the rights and responsibilities of married and common-law spouses before and after separation. It also deals with spousal support and property division after separation or divorce. So the amendments proposed in Bills 23 and 24 are intended to align NWT legislation with amendments made to the Federal Divorce Act and share the common goal of strengthening the best interests of the child principle. The Divorce Act amendments were based on extensive research and consultation conducted by the federal government and intended to update and modernize the act so that it may continue to promote the well-being of children and families impacted by separation. The alignment of our legislation with the Divorce Act amendments will also allow for families to be governed by similar laws regardless of whether issues are brought under the federal legislation in the case of married spouses seeking divorce, or territorial legislation in the case of common law or married spouses seeking a separation. This will ensure the law is applied consistently and fairly to children regardless of their parents' marital status. So the bills are intended to, one, update the best interests of the child test and related provisions; two, to introduce new terminology that emphasizes parenting and promotes the best interests of the child; and three, to replace the current custody and access orders with parenting and contact orders. The bill will also, four, add new provisions to address family violence; five, to clarify the legal process for relocations; and six, describe new duties for parents, legal advisors, and the courts. The bill also proposes some changes not related to the Divorce Act. These proposals are intended to allow for the collection, use, and disclosure of personal information by and to the Child Support Recalibration Service, and to allow for creating family law rules of court under the Judicature Act. We'll now walk through each of these areas with a bit more detail. So when Canadian courts make orders about parenting, they use the principle of the best interests of the child. The Supreme Court of Canada has referred to it as a child's positive right to the best possible arrangements in the circumstances. The proposed amendments will incorporate the Divorce Act amendments that provide increased guidance to the courts on how to determine the best interests of the child when making custody and access decisions. This will involve updating the list of best interests of the child factors found in the Act with the factors recently added to the Divorce Act. The new list will distinguish itself from the present list in several key areas. It will require the court to consider a child's indigenous upbringing and heritage when assessing culture and language, introduce a new factor that will require the court to consider the child's specific needs, including the need for stability based on the child's age and stage of development. This recognizes that age, level of maturity, and temperament can all influence a child's ability to cope with a change and their need for a particular parenting style. It will also allow for special needs and disabilities to be considered. The changes will expand on the requirement that the court consider the family violence committed by a person seeking custody or access by further requiring the court to consider any civil or criminal proceedings, orders, or conditions that are relevant to the safety of the child. It will also set out new criteria on how to assess the impact of family violence on a child. These will be discussed in further detail in the section on family violence. The changes will also remove the factor in the current list pertaining to the effect of a change of residence will have on a child and replace it with a new list of factors that the court will be required to consider when assessing whether a move is in a child's best interest. A new relocation framework is proposed and will be discussed further in that section. The new list will be non-exhaustive like the present one and will leave room for the court to consider other circumstances and factors that are relevant to a child's well-being. So the proposed amendments will also include the recent clarification in the Divorce Act that a child is to spend as much time with each parent as is consistent with the child's best interests. This will affirm that the allotment of parenting time must be based only on what is best for that child in that child's particular situation and not on a presumption in favor of a particular parenting arrangement, for example, equal parenting time, in which a child spends roughly 50% of the time with each parent regardless of the situation or the best interests of the child. Research and expert opinion indicates that setting this as the default is not always a, in a child's best interest, and therefore parenting time needs to be assessed on an individualized case-by-case basis with the best interests of the child being considered The NWT legislation currently employs the terms custody and access to describe parenting arrangements and the time that parents spend with their children. The proposed amendments will replace this language with new terminology from the Divorce Act that is child-centered and emphasizes parenting. These Divorce Act changes were based on a prevailing view among legal professionals and academics that the terms custody and access should be removed from family law language because they are often associated with property ownership and reinforce a winner-loser mentality that polarizes parents and contributes to the high level of conflict often present in family law. There is an overall consensus that the new terminology promotes the best interests of the child by shifting the focus away from the parents' positions and interests towards the needs of their children and their parental responsibilities. The new terms are summarized as follows. Parenting time is the time that someone in the role of a parent is responsible for a child and includes the time when the child is not physically in the care of that person, such as when the child is at daycare school. Persons with parenting time are able to make day-to-day decisions about the child unless a court order says otherwise. Decision-making responsibility is the responsibility for making significant decisions about a child's well-being related to the child's health, education, language, religion, and significant extracurricular activities. Contact is the time that a non-parent spends with a child, for example, visiting time with a grandparent, and parenting orders and contact orders will set out the parenting time and decision-making arrangements for a child. So the amendments will replace the access and custody orders found in the Act with parenting and contact orders. The new orders will be based on those that were introduced into the Divorce Act. Parenting orders will allow the court to set out and assign decision-making responsibility and parenting time referred to in the Act as custody and access. Although parenting orders will employ new terminology, they will not be significantly different from custody and access orders. As the custody and access orders, as with custody and access orders, both parents and non-parents will be able to apply for orders, and the best interests of the child will continue to be the only consideration in how decision-making responsibility and parenting time is allocated. While the new parenting orders will retain much of the substance of custody and access orders, they will also introduce new provisions that will further strengthen the best interests of the child principle. These proposed provisions will allow for non-removal, a non-removal clause to be included in a parenting order that will prohibit the removal of a child from a geographical region without the written consent of the other parent or a court order authorizing the removal. This is intended to address situations where there is believed to be a risk of abduction. They will also facilitate communication between a parent and a child outside of that person's parenting time. This is intended to help maintain relationships between children and parents when they are apart. They will also clarify that a person with parenting time or decision-making responsibility is entitled to request and obtain information about a child's well-being from another person who has parenting time and decision-making time with the same child or a third party, such as a doctor, school, or others. And they will allow for a parenting plan to be included in the order in which the parties have agreed to parenting time, decision-making responsibility, or contact arrangement. The proposed amendments will also allow non-parents who wish to spend time with a child to seek leave of the court to apply for a contact order. This will allow the Act to address situations in which a relationship breakdown causes strain resulting in the former spouse being unable or unwilling to facilitate contact with children and special people in their lives, such as grandparents. The amendments will align the Act with recent developments in the family violence field and provide increased guidance to courts and legal professionals on what constitutes family violence and how to treat it in parenting decisions with the goal of providing greater protections for families and children. The provisions will allow for the similar protections to be provided to children regardless of their parents' marital status and whether they are seeking a separation or a divorce. The provisions include a definition of family violence that was added to the Divorce Act. This evidence-based definition reflects the broad range of physical and non-physical forms that family violence can take based on research findings in the field. These include coercive and controlling behavior, financial abuse, neglect, stalking, sexual abuse, and indirect exposure of a child to family violence through the witnessing of abuse towards another family member. The definition also clarifies that behavior does not have to constitute a criminal offense to be family violence. A non-exhaustive list of best interests of the child factors specific to family violence that will require the court to consider the nature, seriousness, and frequency of the person engaging in the violence has taken steps, frequency of the family violence, sorry, its impact on the child, the risk to the child, and whether the person engaging in the violence has taken steps to prevent further violence and improve their parenting. This list is based on growing evidence that each type of violence can have unique impacts and effects on a child, and therefore the court must consider the particular nature and the impact of the family violence to determine which parenting arrangement is best for the child. Oops, I'll go back one. A new factor is being added to the best interests of the child list that requires the court to consider any civil or criminal proceeding, order, condition, or measure that is relevant to the safety, security, and well-being of the child. This recognizes that many types of orders related to civil and criminal proceedings may be relevant to the safety or well-being of the child. Examples include a conviction related to an assault against the child and a current or past child protection order related to the child. Orders that do not directly concern the child may also be relevant to the best interests of the child. Considering this type of information will protect children and also promote consistency between various court orders that might have an impact on the child. There are provisions that provide for inclusion of a requirement of supervision during parenting time or during the transfer of a child from one person to another. These are intended to address situations where a parent may not be safe interacting with the other parent, or the child could be exposed to high levels of conflict during a transfer. The proposed amendments will include a relocation framework, as was introduced into the Divorce Act, to address the moving of a child following a separation. The Act does not currently reference relocation with the exception of including a change of residence as a factor in determining the best interests of the child. The proposed framework will be grounded in the best interests of the child principle and will bring clarity and structure to an area of family law that is often described as ambiguous and highly contentious. The framework will include a child-focused definition of relocation that requires it to be considered in terms of its impact on the relationship between the child and significant person in the child's life. Mandatory notice requirements that will apply any time a parent moves or a parent moves with a child. The requirements will vary depending on whether the, whether the planned move is a local change of residence or a move of significant distance. A process that requires a person objecting to a move to do so by way of court application or a form prescribed by the regulations. This will conserve judicial resources as courts will only have to deal with relocation applications if there's a disagreement. that requires a person objecting to a move to do so by way of court application or a form prescribed by the regulations. This will conserve judicial resources as courts will only have to deal with relocation applications if there's a disagreement. A non-exhaustive list of the best interests of the child factors that are specific to relocation and which will be triggered if there is an objection to a relocation and cannot be settled outside of court. This will require a court to consider such factors as the reasons for the relocation, the impact of the relocation on the child, and the amount of time with the child by each parent who has parenting time, and outline specific burdens of proof that will require parents to demonstrate why a relocation may or may not be in a child's best interest. The proposed amendments will set out a specific list of duties for parents with matters before the court, legal advisors, and the courts that will be based on the duties that were added to the Divorce Act. The Act does not currently have a list of duties. The duties for parents and non-parents with contact time will encourage compliance with the Act by clearly stating their obligations to uphold the best interests of the child principle, to protect children from any conflict that arises from a proceeding, and to comply with all orders and regulations made under the Act including providing accurate and up-to-date information as required by an order. The duties will also require the parties to try and resolve disagreements through family dispute resolution processes to the extent that is appropriate to do so. This will be of benefit as it is generally faster and less expensive to resolve issues through mediation or other dispute resolution processes rather than through the court proceedings. These processes tend to improve the communication skills divorcing or separating spouses need to resolve issues related to their children, and children also benefit from seeing their parents work together. The codification of these duties into the Act will promote greater awareness of their importance and will be of assistance to the growing number of self-repetitive litigants. There will also be new duties for legal advisors that will require them to encourage their clients to utilize dispute resolution processes where appropriate and to inform clients about family justice services that can help them to resolve matters or comply with their obligations under the Act. The amendments will also place duties on the courts to address the situations where families are involved with multiple parts of the justice system at the same time. This will require the courts to identify and consider any civil or criminal proceeding, order, condition, or measure that is relevant to the safety, security, and well-being of the child and which may conflict with a parenting order. This inclusion of these duties is intended to improve coordination and communication among various legal proceedings and to avoid situations where a court may be unaware of another proceeding. And now we'll touch on the Non-Divorce Act-related changes. Firstly, we have amendments related to the Child Support Recalibration Service. Amendments are needed to outline the rules around the collection, use, and disclosure of personal information by and to the Child Support Recalibration Service. The proposed amendments would allow the service to collect personal information about the parties from the Maintenance Orders Enforcement Program or Interjurisdictional Support Orders Program for the purposes of the service, and allow the service to disclose personal information about the parties without their consent in certain circumstances for the purposes of the Act. It would allow the service to disclose personal information with the parties to the Maintenance Order Enforcement Program or the Interjurisdictional Support Order Program in certain circumstances for the purposes of those programs, and it would also make consequential amendments to the Maintenance Orders Enforcement Act and Interjurisdictional Support Orders Act to allow those programs to disclose personal information for the purposes of the service as well. And it would allow the service to access family court files without the consent of the parties or leave of the court for the purposes of recalculating child support amounts. There are impediments to the making of rules of court. So this is interfering with the making of general family law rules of court for the Supreme Court. The amendment of Section 75 of the Children's Law Act and 62 of the Family Law Act will allow for greater flexibility for the judiciary to create broadly applicable rules of court under the Judicature Act and respond to changing circumstances that necessitate adjustments to the rules of the courts as they arise. Lastly, the proposed amendments are intended to balance the public requirements of justice with the private nature of family law disputes and to prevent malicious access to and use of court file information. This follows the Ontario Children's Law Reform Act, and it also restricts the open court principle. The approach already exists in child and family services, and the expansion comes out of discussions with the NWT bar, the courts, and other GNT departments. And this concludes our presentation. We welcome your comments and feedback.
Thank you. Thank you, Minister McDonald. Committee, are there any questions for the Minister of Justice, M.L.A. Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for coming today and that explanation. So I understand that one of the main purposes of the amendments was to align our acts with the federal Divorce Act changes, and yet it seems that there are a number of cases where the proposed changes still have different wording or definitions from the federal Divorce Act and therefore some different legal meanings, and there's still some confusion. And we received a submission from the Law Society, from a group of family lawyers that, you know, went through in considerable detail, some, like pointing out some specific areas where definitions are still unclear or different from the federal act, for example, even the definition of what a child is. There's some discrepancies and confusion, definition of what an advisor is. And so, I mean, I don't want to go through right now, like each one of the very specific things that they refer to, but my question would be, have you reviewed... So there was a submission back in 2023 before the end of the last assembly by the group of family lawyers from the Law Society, and it seems that a few of their recommendations were rolled into the new proposal that we see now, but most were not. So, A, I'm wondering if you, your department, has reviewed the submission, and if you could provide them and us with sort of a detailed response in terms of whether you've considered each of the recommended, you know, definitions, changes, and if not, why? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Minister?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the member for the question. I will pass to Emily for a response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Yes, so we definitely reviewed the feedback, which was appreciated. They did provide a pretty detailed submission with feedback on the draft bill, and it was initially provided to them. There were, as you noted, a number of changes incorporated after we reviewed that. Not all of them were accepted, but we'd be happy to go back and provide a breakdown of which ones were and the kind of a little bit of the rationale behind that for both to them and to committee if you'd like.
M.L.A. Morgan, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so that would be very much appreciated. You know, just to give an example of where that might be significant, you know, defining a child in one case as simply a minor and in another case defining a child as a minor that specifically, like needs the, you know, okay, I'm not going to be able to explain it correctly. Just go back here. There we go. In another case, a minor who is not withdrawn from the charge of his or her parents. So those could have very different sort of implications. So even though it seems like very technical things, I wonder if in that specific case, so I'm referring here Okay, so under Part III of the Children's Law Act, under decision-making responsibility, parenting time, contact, a child is referred to as a minor, but under Part IV, under child support, a child is supposed to mean a minor who is not withdrawn from the charge of his or her parents. Can you explain in that case why there's a different definition of a child? Is that, is there like a justification for that, or was that like a mistake? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Minister?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll pass over to Ian for a response on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that particular difference relates to the concept of emancipation. So that's where a person may still be a child, but they're sufficiently independent to be running their own household and not be under the care of their parents. Thank you.
Thank you. M.L.A., to start?
Sorry, I forgot. Thank you. And apologies for being late to the hearing. So my first question is a general one, is why are there two bills rather than just kind of one bill that affects all the relevant pieces of legislation? It just seems like a cleaner way to update the policy environment related to divorce and custody and access. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Minister?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll pass that one to Ian, please. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason there are two bills is because at the time that we prepared the drafts, we had experience with large bills where there were schedules and whatnot. So I think, for example, the cannabis one might have been in that genre. So it was our thinking to separate them into two bills. Obviously, one bill is more significant than the other. So in a way, it's sort of like a satellite belt orbiting around the Act to amend the Children's Law Act.
Thank you. M.L.A., to start. Do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, so just to the nature of the legislation, it was noted in our review that the bill, or I'm trying to remember which one, but anyways, it applies to both, but there's no paramountcy provision within this, that this legislation would take precedence over the Arbitrations Act or other pieces of legislation that relate to legal agreements. Is there a reason why a paramountcy clause was not included? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Paramountcy provisions, so I didn't quite catch the full question, but if there is a conflict between territorial legislation and the Divorce Act, the Divorce Act is going to be a paramount anyway. If your question was addressing the indigenous laws, there is a paramountcy provision in the federal act. I cannot remember the name of it. It's in UTE, et cetera. So that's the federal act that allows indigenous governments and organizations to make their own laws in respect of child and family services. And if there were a conflict with any of those indigenous laws, the paramountcy provisions in that federal act would take priority, and once again, territorial legislation cannot override the federal act. And I think it's actually a conflict provision right at the beginning of that federal act on that. So these paramountcy provisions are certainly in the federal act, and we don't have authority to override them.
Thank you. Mr. M.L.A. McNeely, do you have a question?
Yes, my, thank you, Madam Chair. The last assembly adopted the UNDRIP legislation, so that's within our organization now. So my question, has consideration been made to include provisions in Bill 23 and 24 to incorporate the United Nations Convention of the Rights of a Child, including a child's right to counsel? Thank you.
Okay. Minister, I mean, Mr. Remy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The UNDRIP Implementation Act, so that's, if we were to put in a provision that dealt with that in this legislation, it would be preempting the work of the Action Plan Committee. And there is, in our view, no inconsistency with UNDRIP. There is a statement of consistency that was tabled. So in terms of the relationship with the UNDRIP Implementation Act, it's very much the job of the Action Plan Committee to have another look at all the legislation, as you know, and that's why there's no mention of it there.
Thank you. Mr. M.L.A. McNeely, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I do there. Thank you, Madam Chair. And if the department could look into that request or that question of UNDRIP inclusion, that would be good, just to provide some answers. And my follow-up question, Madam Chair, is to the minister during the public hearing or through correspondence, asking if there should be further consideration to include deferring factors that may affect the North and its population to Sections 3 (F) of Bill 23. Thank you.
Minister?
Sorry, Madam Chair, could we ask the member to repeat the question? We're having a difficult time hearing.
Okay. M.L.A. McNeely?
Thanks, Madam Chair. My question is to Sections 3 (F) of Bill 23. So the question to that piece, should there be further consideration to include deferring factors that affect the North and its population?
I'm just looking at the bill. Is this, this is in the bill, Madam Chair? Bill 23, and which clause is it?
Number 3 (F).
I'm sorry, again, the reference?
Section 3 (F).
Which, clause 3?
Brackets F.
I'm, okay, which page would that be on?
I'm just going by our notes here. I'm not familiar with...
Because I'm looking at clause 3, talking about...
It's in the best interest of the child, best interest of the child.
Oh, 23. 26, Sub 3.
Yes, please, Bruce Lee.
We could certainly have a look at that.
Mr. M.L.A. McNeely?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. We seem to have the best interest in reforming or updating or revising legislations related to Bill 23 and 24. We may consider, given, you know, the short time of our meeting today, we may be giving you suggestions on further amendments rather than just crap everything in 20 minutes or half an hour or an hour. It just seems that we would be more effective as a committee and as a government if we give you a list of recommended changes or amendments or clarifications. So I just want to make that noted. Thank you. Thank you.
Minister?
Yeah, certainly, I think that, yeah, we would be happy to take away any feedback from committee or recommendations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We have time for a second set of questions. Mr. Mala Testart?
Thank you. So the acts, both acts make reference to, oh, sorry, this reference in the Children's Law Act amendments to mediators, a large section on that. And there's similar references in, that's section 30, and then in the Family Law, section 8. It was noted to us that there's no provisions for alternative justice processes in legislation. I mean, that, I'm assuming that's defined elsewhere, because this is advice we're getting from lawyers who practice family law. So they, and the feedback was that if, because mediation is a technical legal process that is quite expensive, especially if it's pursued privately, then not everyone has access to it to the same degree. And many of the processes that we have in place, including the family mediation policy or process, I think it's been around for 30 years or something like that, has been very successful, especially in access to justice. So was there a reason why alternative justice processes aren't included as a separate condition for resolving disputes in section 8, section 30, and I guess just throughout both bills? Thank you.
Minister?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll defer to Mr. Remy on that one. Thank you.
Please proceed, Mr. Remy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing I would do is, in response to that question, would be to see if there is regulation-making authority in, this would be clause 43, the proposed replacement for section 84. So I'm just doing a quick scan of this to see if I have alternative dispute resolution or mediation as mentioned. I don't see anything offhand from a quick scan, but that doesn't mean that it's not covered, because there are these catch-all provisions in paragraphs M and N. So that could be relegated to regulation. There is a certain amount of freedom if it's relegated to regulations, because we don't really know what the alternative dispute resolution mechanisms are. But there is a, they can be described in the regulations, and they can also be regulated if necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mala Testart, do you have a follow-up question?
Separate topic, if you'll allow. Thank you. And just on that, that's fine, as long as we can cover them through some capacity, so we're not cutting off that access. So Bill 23 makes reference to restraining orders, and it's, I'm not sure what the actual section is, but we were just reviewing it ahead of time, and it seems like there are no clear penalties for violating those restraining orders or provisions that would allow a court, rather, to have a clear, clearly defined path to make consequences if a parent or party in a dispute violates those. My understanding is that that's very problematic when you have kind of offenses or you give a court or a government the ability to charge people or so order people, but there's no actual consequences. It creates this kind of legal vagary that can actually render the section moot if it's challenged in court. So is there a reason, or am I missing something? Are there actual penalties prescribed somewhere else? If you could just clarify that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Remy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In terms of a restraining order, if one doesn't follow a restraining order, it's still an order from the court. Therefore, there would be measures imposed by the court, consequences, something like contempt of court. With the freedom to create rules of court with respect to family law matters, under the Judiciary Act, it's restricted to, the rules of court are restricted to practices and procedures before at the court. Therefore, some of this could also be addressed in the Family Law Rules of Court, the consequences of not complying with a restraining order. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, do, can I, sorry.
No. So you, that was the second one?
Yeah.
Okay. I do have a question too as well. Okay, introduce a new terminology. So the new terminology from the Divorce Act is child center emphasizing parents and promotes the best interest of the child. So at what age, I know there is a, you know, that child does have a right to choose, but at what age does a child can choose? Where there's a certain age limit for the child to choose, to live with, to choose to live with either parents? Thank you. And Mr. Remy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have that information in front of me, but there is a, generally, at law, there is a ban, somewhere between 12 and 16 or so. And it's, I think the answer to your question would be driven by the case, the particular case, because just because they're 12 years old doesn't necessarily mean that they have the maturity to be, make that decision or be emancipated from their parents.
Okay. So another one too, so is that identified in the act? Was there any changes made within that act to identify the age? Because it is, you know, the Divorce Act, child center emphasizing parent?
I.
Thank you.
We would have to check on that, but one should keep in mind that the, this legislation, including the Divorce Act, is not actually geared towards the status of the child. It's geared towards divorce in that particular case. Obviously, this one is oriented towards children, the Children's Law Act, but I think we would have to do a little bit more research to see if we did actually mention that in this draft bill, or in this bill, actually.
Yes, I was referencing Bill 23. So that's got the, Bill 23 and 24, so it's got that, you know, maybe, it would be nice if we can, you know, get some more information on that, clarity on that. Okay, thank you. Mala Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so you've emphasized that one of the main purposes of these amendments is to better emphasize the best interests of the child. And yet, there are a couple parts of the old act that have been related to the best interests of the child that have been taken away and not replaced with anything. And so I'm wondering if you can sort of provide an explanation. So the first example is current section 8 bracket 1 of the Family Law Act would allow the court to assess terms within a domestic agreement and whether it meets the best interests of the child. And so the amendments are proposing to take that away, to repeal it, and as I understand it, not replace it with anything. Can you clarify whether that is replaced with something else, somewhere, somewhere else in the act that we're not seeing? Or why, why was that section just repealed and not replaced with anything? So that's section 8 bracket 1 of the Family Law Act.
Okay, Mr. Remy?
I'm, I would have to, we would have to go through the Bill 23, the Act Two Amendment to Children's Law Act, and determine which provision actually addresses that.
Thank you. Mala Morgan, do you have a follow-up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So another example is that the Bill 23, in clause 21, it repeals section 59.2 of the Children's Law Act. And I can repeat that if it helps you to find it. So the current Children's Law Act, section 59.2, is being repealed, and it's repealed in clause 21 of Bill 23. And currently, that would allow the court, the authority, to override parts of a domestic contract that deal with child support. So, for example, if, if a court felt that the current child support agreement was not actually serving the best interests of the child, even if it was agreed upon between the two adults, it was like, wait a minute, this doesn't actually serve the best interests of the child, it allows the court to override that and say, no, this, this agreement is not okay. But now we've repealed that, and I don't see anywhere that it's been replaced with something else, that authority that the, is, are we still giving the court the authority to override sections of a domestic agreement or parenting contract around child support? Or is the intention just to take away that authority of the court? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Remy?
I'm looking at section 59.2 of the current Children's Law Act. Court may set aside a provision respecting support for a child in a domestic contract. So that's set aside, doesn't actually say modify it. I would have to check again, Bill 23, to answer that question. So it is, it is a technical bill, and many of these, the questions would have to be looked at to get the answer that's accurate.
Okay. Mala Morgan? Okay, so we'll get some more information on that. Mala Testart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the change in residence provisions, so there's been updates to the bill around when parents are required to notify a court of a change in residence. And the concern is that in most cases in the Northwest Territories, communities are very small, even Yellowknife is pretty small. So the provision of change of, you know, moving from the blue house on Main Street to the greenhouse on Main Street in a very small community, might, it seems onerous on individuals and presents access to justice issues as well. Is there, can, is there a way to modify that through regulation, or does a bill contemplate that experience? Because it makes sense if you're moving from, you know, Sigicik to Fort Smith, that you'd have to notify the courts or the parties involved. But certainly, if it's within the same community, that seems like an unnecessary, an unnecessary piece of the regime that's being proposed. Thank you.
Mr. Remy?
I'm not sure I caught the question entirely, but certainly, there is broad regulation-making authority in section 84, in those two paragraphs at the end, to, to deal with something if it's not dealt with in the act or even.
Are you satisfied with that? Yes, yes. Mr. Mala Testart, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, really, yeah, it's the relocation, sorry if I missed the question, it's the section on relocation. So the question specifically is, will parties have to kind of vary their orders if they're moving in the same community, in a small community, right, versus changing communities completely? Because it seems onerous to require people to move, to, in a very small community, to have to update their, their agreements, or require permission to move and all the stuff that comes to the relocation sections, when it is a very small community. And, and that seems more like a feature of legislation in a larger city like Toronto, where moving, you know, within the same city is potentially, you know, changing postal codes and all that kind of stuff. And we just have a very different geographical reality in the Northwest Territories. So I just want to make sure that we're not setting up undue hardship on parties who are in that situation, because of course, relocation happens frequently. And, yeah, that's, that's, that's the clarification. Hopefully, that's clear enough. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Remy?
The relocation provisions are also driven by the Divorce Act. In terms of just how they're applied, I don't have an answer to that, but that could certainly be dealt with under the regulations or even under the Family Law Rules of Court. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Remy. Ms. Mala Yakalaya, do you have a question?
Yeah, for the relocation, section 38.4 in Bill 23 requires written notice when a child's residence may change. Is any, is any NWT community large enough to warrant this? Will this section create an access-to-justice barrier? Thank you.
Minister?
I would have to think about that and see.
Okay, Mr. Remy, go ahead, please.
Madam Chair, we would have to think about an answer to that question. Again, it's, it's a technical piece of legislation, so we'd have to sit down and analyze the question and how it relates to the provision. In a specific answer to your question, Yellowknife is probably big enough.
Thank you. Ms. Yakalaya, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I have another question regarding restraining orders. So Bill 23 currently proposes changes to restraining orders whereby now they can be subject to more people than solely parents or cohabitating parties. Can the minister clarify the intent of the broadening of the use of restraining orders in Bill 23? Would it be more appropriate to allow restraining orders to be made within the Protection Against Family Violence Act or the Family Law Act? Thank you.
Mr. Remy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The question is, I understand it, is whether the restraining orders under this particular statute are necessary, and whether the ones under the Child and Family Services Act would suffice. I think the answer to the question is that we're dealing with different subject matter. When it comes to the Child and Family Services Act, we're dealing typically with things such as child protection orders and that sort of thing. Here, we're dealing, we're not in that realm. However, there is a certain degree of coordination that's necessary between the two statutes, as well as the Divorce Act for that matter. In terms of the restraining orders, I think they exist in the current act. And this legislation is very much based on Ontario's, which our current act is also based on Ontario's at a point in time. So in terms of the restraining order under this act, it probably is necessary, but it is different from the restraining order under the Child and Family Services Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more? Okay. Mala Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of the changes that I think is intended to mirror the federal Divorce Act is the definition of a family member, which is newly defined in Bill 23, to include a dating partner of a parent who participates. of a parent who participates, who participates in the activities of the household. So I guess the dating partner is someone who participates in the activities of the household. And while I understand that it's intended to recognize that, you know, modern families look different now, and dating partners can be a member of a family, it might be confusing to people in Northwest Territories what exactly that means, or what exactly that looks like for, it's someone who participates in the activities of a household, that's the definition. Is there a way that you could explain, or how would you explain that sort of to general people in the population, what that means? And is there any intention to clarify the legal definition in the Bill to make it more precise? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Remy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The definition of family member appears in proposed Section fifteen, subsection one. And it opens with family member includes a member of a household and so forth. Includes is an important word, because it means that it's a non-exhaustive listing, so whatever comes after is not definitive, it's not just that, it could be something else. Therefore, the definition is actually quite wide open. So that would be my response to the question. Thank you.
Okay. Can we ask for Miss Ingriffiel field input, too, as well?
Sure. Sure. Yeah. So we could take, like you mentioned, it is based on the Divorce Act definitions that have changed. We can take a look at whether there's any further clarification that could be added to that. It's kind of across, I think it's relatively across, like, I'd have to do a double check, but other provinces who have followed suit and adopted the Divorce Act changes, so that it is a very similar definition. So without wanting to commit to going in and making changes, if it's going to be separating or making our, our regime different, we could take a look at if further clarification is possible.
Okay. Emily Morgan, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the question is, it does seem quite open, and so I guess the question is, do you foresee any problems with it being so open, that it could be defined in so many different ways, and people could interpret it in so, so many different ways? And if, if there's a problem with, like, the legal definition being different from the legal definition in federally or parts of Canada, could there be a way for, like, a plain language explanation, or sort of communications materials that could help clarify the intention behind it, or how it might be applied in NWT? Like, are there ways to clarify for people what it means, even if it's not through changing the, the legal definition? If you foresee any problems with it being so open? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Yes, Miss Ingriffiel?
Yeah, thank you. So I would say that we have talked at some length with other jurisdictions who have adopted the Divorce Act changes, and we've heard from them that generally, they've been, like, positively or either neutrally received, they haven't faced any challenges in those areas, or they haven't raised any concerns about how that is phrased in, in their legislation, since they've made those changes. But for, for sure, as, after the Bills passed, we're looking at which of our family law materials, public legal education information needs to be updated, so looking at whether we need to add something in to clarify that, we could definitely take a look at that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Emily Testert, do you have a question?
Yes, so I want to commend the, the gender-neutral language of the Bills, or the changes that the Bills propose, and that, I think, is consistent with where a lot of legislation's going. But it has left some kind of weirdness, let's, let's put it, where, and where we might be able to use plain language to, to express the same thing. So I'm just wondering what, whether these kind of, I'll give you one example, and whether it comes from the Divorce Act, or whether it was a conception of the Department in drafting the Bill. It's Clause thirty-eight of the child and whichever bill that was, the child, child law, and it's amend Section seventy-seven, and the language used is, it's around substitutional services, and where there's no presumption of parentage and the identity of the person whose sperm resulted in the conception of the child. So one of the, the feedback points was, this is kind of clunky language compared to something that could just be biological parent, which seems to get at the same point with, with a much more succinct and, and simple way to, to express that. So is this language from the Divorce Act, or is this something that we, we put in there in trying to be as gender-neutral as possible? Thank you.
Mr. Remy?
Yes, thank you. The mention of sperm, when I saw it, the first thing that I thought of was dealing with artificial insemination. So is there a biological parent when you're dealing with artificial insemination? The wording comes from Ontario, the Ontario Children's Law Reform Act, and using that wording, we can import as persuasive legal authority the corpus of case law that deals with that in Ontario, particularly with that, that provision. So it may seem clunky, but there is probably a little bit more to it than meets the eye. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Emily Testert, do you have a follow-up question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, that's helpful, so that we had that question around IVF and, and artificial insemination. So that's the, the choice, just to clarify, the choice here was to capture that, if there's kind of artificial reproduction technologies being used for, for parentage. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Yes, same question.
Yes, Mr. Emily Testert, please.
So this, this was chosen to cover IVF and other cases, or when there's technology used for, for, to, to create a child, I don't know what the right word is, but rather than the, the, the kind of traditional conception of, of two parents, but like when there's in vitro fertilization or other artificial reproduction technologies being used. That's why this was chosen, to cover those situations. Is that correct? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, the answer to the question is yes, and I would also put.
Mr. Remy? Okay. Wait, please. Mr. Remy, please proceed now.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. The, the answer to the question is yes, and I would also point out that sperm, unfortunately, it does have a gender affiliation to it. Thank you.
Okay, is there any more question from the committee? Mr. Halkin, do you have a question?
So it seems like we have any more questions, so I would like to say thank you to Mr. McDonough for, and for appearing before the committee today. But before we end, I would like, at this time, I would like, I would now like to open the floor to members of the public. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to share their feedback on Bill twenty-three, an act to amend the Children's Law Act, and Bill twenty-four, an act to amend the Family Law Act? See, no further individuals who wish to speak to Bill twenty-three and twenty-four. Committee would now like to thank everybody who attended today's public hearing. And folks, and to those who are watching at home and would like to provide feedback, there is still time. The deadline for written submissions on Bill twenty-three and twenty-four is Friday, August first. Please send your comments to committees at NT Assembly, to, comments to committees at NTAssembly.ca. Now, this concludes the public portion of this morning proceeding, members. We will take five minutes, five minutes break, and then we will conclude.